Good evening, and this is a school board special meeting. Welcome to our meeting tonight. It is 7:00 PM. Today is Monday, August 17, 2020. This special meeting tonight is being conducted remotely via Hangouts Meet. It is being livestreamed by BECTV and will be replayed for the usual BECTV replay schedule. I would like to do a roll call now for all board members who are present. Please indicate that you are here. We'll start with Director Bibi.
Here.
Director Bennett.
Here.
Director Olson.
Here.
Director Sorum.
Here.
Director Starks.
Here.
Director Stegaf.
Here.
And Director Corman is present, so we're all present tonight. And for today, we have, oh, before that, approval of the agenda. I'd like to move approval of the agenda. Is there a second, please?
Seconds, Stegaf.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda for tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Bibi.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sorum.
Aye.
Starks.
Aye.
Stegaf.
Aye.
Corman, aye. The agenda has been approved, so we'll start with our only item of the day, which is the fall planning update. I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm not sick. I just, you know, had a moment of a cough. So before we start with our first item, I just would like to read our statement for today, my statement. So this fall will be the first fall every school district will experience during this pandemic. And like every school board in Minnesota, we tackle a simple but weighted question. Do we return to school amid a pandemic with no right answers? As board, we had multiple study sessions on the work of our teams that were developing the various learning models, the benefits and challenges with each one. We reached a point two weeks ago where a decision was made. This decision was made based on recommendation of administration to start the school year in a hybrid model with a flex option, along with Bloomington online school. That was followed by a request for all parents to indicate which learning model they wanted their child to begin the school year. Simultaneously, we asked staff to indicate their intent to return to work, including whether individual staff would seek work from home accommodations. Since then, each of us had numerous conversations with parents, teachers, principals, staff, and students who are anxious about the return to school. And by the way, thank you to all those who had reached out to us, sending emails or making phone calls. It became clear that the issues and challenges we all face are massive. The two recurring themes we heard were health concerns and a quality educational experience for every child. Tonight, we will receive an update from district and school leaders, along with Wendy Marchak, president of the Bloomington Federation of Teachers. That includes how, what parents and staff indicated under learning model preference and return to work intern forms for the first time may or may not be aligned. I believe we will once again be faced with an incredibly complex school reopening decision. As we have done in our previous meetings, I'd like for us, for members, to withhold our questions until after the presentation. At this time, Superintendent Les Fujitaki will begin the presentation. Superintendent.
Great. Thank you, Chair Corman. First slide, please. The purpose of this presentation is to update the board on our fall planning work. Next slide, please. Please note that the August 3rd board meeting was not the culmination of all our fall planning work. At the August 3rd meeting, administration said that we'd continue to update the board on developments with respect to our fall planning work. This is the reason for tonight's presentation. Leading up to the August 3rd board meeting, the board held a number of sessions where administration presented their fall planning programming work. At these sessions, the board asked questions and gave feedback to administration to help them develop their different models. At the August 3rd board meeting, I made a recommendation that we start the school year with a hybrid model. I made this recommendation because the hybrid program that we're recommending is a result of research, collaboration, and problem solving among a number of our leaders and stakeholders. The admin team believed that our proposed hybrid program is a well-designed instructional delivery model, and that was the basis for my recommendation to the board. Next slide, please. The board was asked to support my recommendation because we needed to be able to gather stakeholder information to help us determine if the hybrid model is viable. We need to find out parent, family choice of programming, whether they wanted a hybrid, hybrid flex, or Bloomington online program. And we also needed to ask staff about their accommodation applications or requests. Next slide, please. Fortunately, we had a great response from our families. Over 80% of our families selected a preference in programming. Again, it's hybrid, hybrid flex, or online. So we had a great response rate. The next slide shows this, that when we asked staff to request accommodations, 20% of our teachers applied for accommodations that they are entitled to under federal and state law. In fact, we're still receiving applications today in our HR department from teachers requesting accommodations. Equipped with this data, our principals and other leaders set out to do a number of assessments. One of those assessments is to determine if the hybrid instructional delivery model is viable. I'll now ask Oak Grove Middle School Principal Brian Ingeman to share findings of the secondary leadership group. Principal Ingeman, please.
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki, Madam Chairman, School Board. Just to kick off the secondary piece, we've been having a lot of conversations over the last weeks about the viability and how we're going to pull it off, make sure we provide high-quality education. So middle schools and high schools have been studying and focusing on the health and safety of our school community for students and staff, high academic expectations, equitable, meaningful academic experience, and been examining multiple models of hybrid, flex, and distance learning models in collaboration with teachers, administrative leaders. And I would say that these committees have been well-represented across the secondary schools. And each committee has multiple teachers in each building that are part of this collaborative effort with administration to look at the different models and the viability. I'll turn it over to my colleague, Jason Anderson, to talk more about the models we're looking at and the tasks we had.
Thank you, Brian, and Superintendent Fujitaki, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and those watching at home. Yes, I am going to summarize the work that the middle schools and high schools did in the last few weeks, attempting to build on the suggested models. On the slide in front of you, you can see our notes and how we went about our work. And we went about our work aiming to maintain the high standards that we have for ourselves here in Bloomington and the respect for the tremendous professionals we have in our building and for the high standards of our families and students. So the first option that I'm going to examine or walk along with you today is the hybrid model as currently drafted. Again, the description of the model has been discussed a few times in previous meetings, but this model would allow students' choice in instructional models, including hybrid, hybrid flex, and Bloomington online school. And in this model, hybrid students would come in two days a week on a rotating basis, while flex students and online students would work from home in various lengths. The benefits of that model would be that students can select the learning format that best suits their needs and that we would respect and honor teacher accommodations and try to work with them on their work preference. Some of the complications that we ran into when we ran through many variations of this work, we have, each site has spreadsheets with a lot of pages and data, and so these are some of the complications that we all ran into. The first is that every site has significant staffing holes. Every time that we tried to build from this model, we were unable to staff it at appropriate levels with the right licensure, with qualified adults in every classroom. So that was right off the bat a challenge right there, that we were not able and still not have been able to figure out how we can staff this model with high-qualified adults. In addition to that, many classes will not be able to run in all three formats due to size, section size, class size, and staffing. Again, the original goal was that students being able to pick their platform of learning, but they would still have access to the classes that they need, the high academic programming that they have been planning on for years. We quickly realized that we would not be able to run sections in all three formats. In addition to that, when we did build this model, we quickly found that class sizes for hybrid would be above recommendations. So as we, and I can get into the weeds later, but when we run this model and we accommodate for staff and students wishing to work from home, we ran into class sizes for the hybrid version of plus 40 students. And then when you, if you cut that in half into A and B cohorts, that still puts us around 20 kids per classroom, which is again above recommendation, safety recommendation. So that was another complication. In addition to staffing, we were worried about moving staff around, not having properly licensed or properly trained staff in classrooms and connected to this district's mission around personal growth plans. Limiting courses, limiting options would deny their ability to really flourish in their PGP, something that we weren't super thrilled with. Other critical data pieces include 91 staff members have requested work from home. I imagine that number is high. This was started a few days ago. I bet that number is higher by now. Dozens of teachers teaching at alternate sites did not feel great. And we did look at TOSAs, repurposing TOSAs throughout the district to help fill us some gaps, even though they necessarily wouldn't have the experience in some classrooms. But we also found that that could not work due to various grants and MDE requirements. At the end, unfortunately, I have to report based on conversations with my colleagues at the middle school and high school level that we believe this model is just simply not workable in its current form. Too many holes to be filled, too many teachers coming, too many areas of responsibility, too many courses that can't be offered, and the quality of our education, that's the thing that we pride ourselves on. We believe would be substandard in the design of our schools. The design of this school would be insufficient. Therefore, we took up, if you want, Dr. Mitchell, I can do the next slide. One thing that I thought would help with this presentation is a visual. So this is just an example. The previous slide had a lot of school-based lingo, but I think this really helps illustrate the challenge that we ran into. This is a Jefferson High School example, but this example does replicate itself at the high schools, at Kennedy and at the middle schools. So for example, we had 188 trimester-one courses in which students requested one of the three versions, so a flex version, online version, and a hybrid version. There were 188 total courses in which we were compelled to try to find three ways to run that class. As you can see in this graph, of those 188 courses, 159 simply do not work. Only 29 of those courses were we able to figure out how to run. The reasons they could not run, because we did not have enough students in a flex or online version to run a section. And that's even if you combine flex, hybrid flex, and online students, even if you combine them into one section. In many of those courses, they do not reach the threshold of justifying a section. We did not have a qualified teacher to teach one of the three versions, or the hybrid version is too large to safely fit in the classroom. So those are the three main reasons that 159 of the 188 courses registered for simply do not run in this model. And that's just a visual example. So then we moved on to trying to find solutions, how we could maintain our high academic standards and how we could make a system that works. And that, we landed on option number two, which is distance learning with support. The key, even though I think you're all familiar with the distance learning phrase, we are extremely confident that version 2.0 or distance learning with support will be a much more polished and student-oriented model. So just to run you through this model, distance learning with support, students would take all of the courses they originally registered and were scheduled for. Students would work from home via distance learning and online tools. Staff would therefore work from home and teach their courses throughout the day. We would, as school leaders, administrators, and counselors, and support staff, would enhance supports to better address needs of students and staff throughout our distance learning with support time. And again, a key feature of this is that we will spend the first week of school not on academics, but on building relationships, building connections, making sure students have the resources and materials they need, making sure that parents have the resources and materials they need, and making sure that teachers have the resources and materials they need. We will spend a full week of school time making sure that every single person in our system is set up for success in the distance learning with supports model. The benefits of this model is scheduling is far simpler and cleaner and manageable. All courses registered for, all courses that are part of a student's PGP, all courses that are part of a student's plan will be honored and provided. Safer, more stable for students, safer and more stable for adults, staff and adult safety would be honored. There are some complications, of course, that any model, no model is perfect. As we know, there were some students who struggled in distance learning. There was probably some adults that struggled in distance learning. So we will be much more tuned to their needs, making sure that their success is all of our success. And we understand also that many parents do prefer to send their students to school. We understand that, and it is our hope to really make sure that parents know, our community knows, that we will be in a significantly better situation to support students and families this fall. Critical data, again, just another piece that sort of illustrates this. At the high school level at least, last year's trimester-three pass no credit rate very nearly mirrored a normal trimester's pass fail rate, which indicates, to me as a school leader, indicates adaptability by both staff, but something that we will continue to work on for this model. So us as principals, we find this model to be viable. While it is certainly imperfect, it is not a perfect solution. We believe this is a viable model. We can provide the courses, we can provide the supports, and we believe we will be in a much better position. One of the things I know that people will be asking is how will distance learning be different this time around than last spring? I went over a few details, but Principal Osmond, the new principal of Kennedy High School, has the next slide, and I believe he will walk us through some more detailed examples. Thank you.
Absolutely, and a lot of what Principal Anderson has shared kind of connects to this next slide. And just really taking the time, the first week of September 8th, to focus on building relationships and routines and making connections, at the same time looking at ensuring that all of our students have the resources and the information that they need, as well as our families, as well as our staff. So taking that structured time to do that, and then to continue to do that from week to week. But spending some time really setting some clearer expectations within that first week. The second part of this work is also, when we take a look at student support, taking a look at opportunities where there's some consistency in our teacher practices and the expectation that families that will have of us, which would mean taking a look at some hub requirements and posting assigned learning tasks on Hub. Also practices as far as the grade book requirements, instructional video requirements for staff. So our families are just navigating in a similar fashion as they have students at the middle level, the elementary level, at secondary level. And ensuring that that remains consistent, so our families are not confused, our staff know exactly what's expected of them. And then when it comes to the course design level, it's really working with our staff and through some guided questions to take a look at their courses and ensuring that there are some consistent online practices and really taking that design work into each course. That's where our educators have experienced with. And now just really having this time to plan and to be laser-focused on what that will look like to ensure this experience with distance learning 2.0 is grounded in the student experience, the staff experience, and also can yield positive results for all involved. So that's what I could share about what this might look like and as far as supports go.
Thank you, Principal Osman. So I want to just take this moment to jump in here to say first thank you to all of the principals, the secondary principals who have just presented, and the elementary principals who I'm about to introduce. There has been a lot of work that has gone into this planning, and especially these last, I'd say, two weeks. I've seen folks working late into the evening, working through the weekends, and so I just, I want to say thank you to all of you. You are the experts when it comes to pulling this together, and I know you've been working closely with our teachers and our staff who've been a part of the work groups for these different models and listening to their concerns and gathering their feedback. And it's just, it's been a large, large task, and so thank you for all of your energy and efforts that you've put in these last couple of days especially. So with that, then, Chair Corman and Superintendent, members of the board, I'll shift us a little bit to looking at the elementary and hearing from some of our elementary principal representatives about the work they've been doing at the elementary level around the hybrid and the flex models. So I'm going to hand it over to Principal Brian Klein, who is the principal at Oak Grove Elementary, and Principal Andy Valmuth, who is the principal at Normandale Hills Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, Superintendent Fujitaki, School Board, and BPS community. Tonight, my colleague, Dr. Valmuth, and I will speak on behalf of our elementary admin colleagues. After the board approved a strong hybrid model that looked to meet the needs of all students, families, and staff, we worked diligently to bring that plan to life. While we saw many of the logistical challenges coming from a flexible educational approach, we also ran into a significant obstacle. Tonight, I'll briefly summarize the status of implementation of the hybrid flex model at the elementary. So first, why again was this model chosen? Because we believed that students, given the hybrid flex option, would have, students and families would have a choice of three instructional models, right? The hybrid, the flex, and the online. And this gives them flexibility of what's the most comfortable and makes the most sense for their position currently. Given that hybrid students then could come into the building, our flex students could work from home, and our online could choose that unique path that we've now created. Students and families selecting that, it best suits their needs, right? And we're all about giving our families what we can to be partners in this and getting a high-quality education. But also by honoring teacher accommodations in a model that provides for remote learning, but also in-school learning, that gives us also some flexibility with our staff to provide supports for them if they're having challenges with coming back into a building. Of course, we know that this option follows the Minnesota Department of Education and Department of Health guidelines, and again, provides that flexibility as well if families need to change, not just, you know, this summer and make a decision, but make a decision as the months go on. And so we worked really hard on this plan because we know it meets the needs of staff and family that also have concerns with just the hybrid model of just returning to school. And so I'll speak, this is a professional, but also this is personal. Dr. Valmuth and I collectively have six children, and so we look at this through the lens of meeting the needs of BPS members, but also how would this serve our own children? And really, it came down to one significant complication, that staffing the hybrid and flex model is not currently possible. We explored every option we had to taking the staff that we had in our building and saying, could we move them here? Could we move them there? Could we take a fifth-grade teacher and move them down and have them teach kindergarten? Could we have this third-grade teacher go online and teach third, fourth, and fifth-grade kids? Do we need to go across the district and pull staff from other buildings into our buildings? So we explored every option of how to take the staff, the amazing staff we have in our building, but also across the district and try to fill all these different holes and make sure we had high-quality teachers in front of your students at every level. And we couldn't make it happen, and there were significant gaps, including specialists, including your para and clerical ranks. So this was about trying to piece all the pieces that we need to make this model work at the elementary level, and we couldn't get there.
I would echo my colleague, Mr. Klein's comment. Good evening, Superintendent Fujitaki, Chair Corman, board members, and BPS community. As we look at this toggled back and forth between is this practical, but then also the efficiency of this plan, and really that consumed our thinking for the last week and a half. But when you really get down to the numbers, we are not able to meet the work-at-home request accommodations for approximately, at this point, 30 of our staff members, and we know that number is likely to grow. And so that, coupled with the efficiency and the effectiveness, quite honestly, of a plan that I think my colleague, Principal Klein, detailed prior, made the hybrid model not viable. So if we can go to the next slide. No, we're stuck, it looks like.
You know, Brian, go ahead if you want to. If you're familiar with this, if you're okay with that. And then Dr. Mitchell, I'm sure, will be able to pull it up.
Yep. So what we then looked at is how does distance learning with support look like? How does that go at the elementary level? So knowing that we created a really good product in the spring, it wasn't ideal, right? We put all of our families and our staff through a tremendous amount of pressure and stress to try to recreate education on the fly when we were all sent home. And so I think we are all proud of the work we did, but we all recognize that we have to make it better in our second edition of that. And to do that, we've learned from that. And that learning started as we were doing it last spring, with all of our staff taking PD behind the scenes as they were teaching and educating our children. They were also growing in their capacity to do it well. Throughout the summer, our district has provided some fantastic professional development. Teachers and staff are taking advantage of that and jumping into all these different learning opportunities that will continue through into the fall. And having that ability within the next few weeks to really focus on doing one thing and doing it very, very well and giving training and support to all of our staff to say, how did this work for our families? What did we hear from them in the spring? How do we make this better? And things we know that we need to do more of is more synchronous learning, right? More virtual live in front of them learning and make that work for our families. They're looking to us to give them high-quality instruction and support, and we're going to do that. And we're going to go all in with all of our staff, all hands on deck, doing it that way with great support from our district to provide professional development through our tech department and our curriculum instruction department, our special ed department, and our EL department to make sure we give students an even better product in 2.0. And that also comes with more supports. So looking at things like for students who are struggling in the distance learning model, what can we do? Are there avenues to potentially provide even more supports that could potentially include bringing them into the building and giving them something more if they need that through our EL department, our special education department, or other areas? So we are very open to looking and exploring, getting feedback from all stakeholders on how this becomes an absolutely ideal way of doing distance learning that other districts could look at as a model.
And to that point, I think if depending on the resolution or what action the school board takes tonight, that would be indeed our next course of action. We're proud of the product that we produced in distance learning 1.0, considering all the circumstances. But as Principal Klein mentioned, we need to have a rigor to start the year. And we also need to have a more structured way to provide support for some of our most at-risk students. And so depending on the decisions made tonight, if it is indeed, if this recommendation or depending on where you move with this information, that will be our next course of action. But quite honestly, leading up to this point, all the work we have done is tried to make the hybrid model work as best possible. And at this point, we did not feel it as a viable option. And I will say, as a member of this community, and as Principal Klein mentioned, someone who has three children, now a middle school and two elementary, this is a difficult decision. We tried very, very hard to make this plan work because I, like my fellow educators in Bloomington, want kids back in the building. We want, that we believe that's the best place for them, and that's the best experience. It's unfortunate that we're bringing this recommendation or this... It's unfortunate that we that we're bringing this recommendation or this proposal, but this this is the, this is the end result of a lot of long and difficult discussions, but but we do believe this is the best course of action from an elementary school perspective.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your presentations. And thank you for all your hard work. I'll now ask Bloomington Federation of Teachers President Wendy Marchak to share her thoughts. Wendy?
Good evening, Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, listening audience. As I can say that this team has worked extremely hard with this hybrid model and trying to make it work and get all the pieces in. But the staffing is really more of an issue, I think, than we expected. I know Mary Burrows can speak to this, but we have staff that have legitimate medical concerns that cause they they need to be at home. COVID crosses so many of the at risk teachers that we didn't even realize it was going to be the 20%. But Mary has worked really hard, and I've talked to tons of teachers. This is legitimate. We've also surveyed the staff and 50% of our staff, they want to come to work. They want, they're ready to go. But we have to do it safely. The teachers have worked all summer on the academic models, and I know that all the principals reached out to their teachers to get input to see, can we make it? And we understand how hard this is. But we just want to do the best that we can do, and we want to make the best distance learning plan ever. We're ready to go and we will show up. We will work hard. And we know more about our SEL needs, and we will think out of the box and be creative and how we can help each and every student. So that's where the teachers are at. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. I'll take this opportunity to summarize what you've heard tonight. Following the August 3rd Board Session, where we decided to start the schooling, the hybrid model, we started to collect family preference information. Fortunately, our families responded by giving us their preferences. We also processed staff requests for accommodations that allowed under new federal law, the federal Family First Corona Response Act and existing Federal Medical Leave Act. Our employees are entitled to these two laws, benefits under these two laws. So we have both of these information. I'll take this opportunity to say to the families, to our staff and to our board members that everyone that's put in all this hard work, I'm sincerely sorry that although we have a well-designed hybrid model, we just can't get the final numbers to work. We're unable to develop a viable staffing solution that balance requests for accommodations with family preferences. And I'm sincerely sorry that that we're not able to deliver a viable model. There is not sufficient staffing to run the hybrid model and deliver the quality learning experience our students and families expect and staff expect. So I'm sorry for that. And we're going to continue to work. We need to deliver a quality education project, product to our community. So I'll turn it over to, back to you, Chair Corman, for questions and answers.
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki, and thank you all principals. Thank you, Mrs. Wendy Marchak and all of your teachers. I know you guys have been working really, really hard and trying to make this happen. You know, we understand all the different needs of our members of our community, the parents who really want their kids to go back, the teachers who really want to be able to go back. I know that every single teacher wants to be able to be in the classroom. As an educator myself, I know that I want to be there. I know I want to see my kids. I know I want to be working there. So I totally can. I totally can relate to all the teachers who desire to return to the parents who decide for their kids to go back, to the people who have concerns and like, like Wendy said, you know, those are legitimate concerns, you know, health concerns. As we look into the decisions that we made two weeks ago, we were looking into the mandate given by Governor Walz. The the guidelines that were established by Minnesota Department of Education, Minnesota Department of Health, and based on where we were at with numbers, COVID numbers. We as a board with the vote that we gave, gave our vote of trust to our administration to follow the recommendation and to look further into whether this was going to be viable or not. This is, this was the main purpose. And we knew back then that things could have changed, you know, it was that there was that possibility back then. And I think we, we, we tried to be clear two weeks ago when, when we voted to express this to our community too, that anything could happen. And so as administration look further into all those different options and possibilities, we are here now. So I truly appreciate the hard work of everyone. And thank you to our teachers, to our staff members for working on those forums, sending those forums to the district so that we could know more of what what was possible staff related. So now I'm gonna ask my board colleagues for any questions. Please ask all the questions that you need to ask tonight. Please ask questions that you have already asked administration during your phone calls this this past week. If you consider that this is important information for all the members to to know, or maybe maybe members of the community, even though you already know the answer, sometimes it's good for all of us to hear those answers. And also, please, once again, as I requested last time, take into consideration the amount of questions that you're going to make at the time. If you please remember, you know, make one, two questions, but please don't ask all five, 10 questions that you have at the same time because or all other members are eager to ask. And so let's take turns. Okay. So who would like to go first?
Okay, Director Starks. Could I, is Executive Director Burrows on this call?
Yep, I am.
Hi. Okay, so could I ask for you to go into a little bit about some of the Ms. Marchak and Superintendent Fujitaki both alluded to some options that employees have for requesting accommodations, requesting leave, those types of things. If you could spell some of those out for us in a little bit more detail, that would be helpful.
Okay. Under the executive order, schools were directed to allow staff to work from home to the extent possible, either if they had a high risk or if they had a family member with high risk. Also, under the ADA, certain individuals can request accommodations that they qualify under the ADA. So HR has been receiving a lot of requests under those three categories. And also some from employees who just don't feel comfortable because, you know, the executive boarder said, if you don't feel comfortable, it also added that level to it. So basically, if people ask for accommodations, we were trying to line up staff for work from home opportunities. And as the principals have alluded, it's not aligning the way that we really needed to do in order to deliver the educational experience that I think people really would want to have. If we deny accommodation or the work from home accommodation, there are other forms of accommodation that we can offer, including leave. And I do know many of the staff are waiting to hear what the decision is going to be regarding their accommodation before they proceed with how they will move forward with their request at that point. I think we talked, I know Les talked a little bit about the federal government has a new law that went into place April 1st, called the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. I think people have been hearing about that, but to clarify that, that does give employees paid leave during this time for COVID-related reasons. Those reasons can be, I have a serious health risk, or my family member has a serious health risk. And so they can take leave under that act. Also childcare, that's something we haven't really talked about, but the complexity of living in a metro area with teachers and other staff who work in many districts around, you know, live in other districts around us. We're also trying to work with their schedule on what they need to provide for their children. And, you know, schools aren't aligned across the state, so it gets to be even more complex on, you know, what days people may need off and, you know, try to staff because of childcare reasons. Beyond that, people also have the right under contract to take FMLA leave if their health condition prevents them from working. Several, many of the people who are on my list would probably qualify for FMLA as well. So that's in addition to the FFCRA leave that they're entitled to under the CARES Act. And then under contract, people have additional leave that they can take up to a full year due to medical reasons in most contracts. Some contracts more than one year, but so there's a lot of various leave types that we're working with or trying to figure out as we move forward. So it's a complex piece.
Thank you. Director Storm.
Just to follow up, how many numbers or what percentage of staff does that represent?
So the main, as Les alluded to, it's about 20% of teachers. Other staff members, we're still trying to see paras. A lot of people are off contract right now. I, last spring, to give you an idea, I had over 100 and 120 paras, request accommodations last spring. We have not seen that yet, but they're also off contract. So we might see that in the next week come in. I'm getting more every day now from Paris, so.
So that number, that number probably will rise. My main concerns, as my other question is mainly for the elementary, which I have five grandchildren in those schools, some of which are okay with distance learning, some are not, as I expect this whole thing to be, but 4,000 elementary students that we have in our 10 10 schools. And we know that the spring online learning was not very successful. So how are you going to assure us that 2.0 online learning with enhanced supports for those families who don't have parents at home, for those who are from one parent families and they have to work or want to work and maybe can't work? And then it throws us grandparents in the loop to try to help with whatever we can do, even though some of us are at risk. So how can we be sure that this 2.0 is going to work with a limited staff that we're coming up with, but all the other specialists that we're going to need? And I'll, and so, I'm sorry. So why don't each of the elementary principals who are here, no, I'm just kidding.
Director Storm, I'll, I'll take your lead. I'll start and and refresh with what we've shared before about what's different about distance learning 2.0. And then I will turn it over to my my principal colleagues to talk about individually, what what are they seeing? Because already some great ideas. And so again, I'll use the line I've used before, we had eight days to plan distance learning in the past. And we had some, we were hamstrung in many ways. We couldn't get into the buildings. We had to kind of make up things as we went. And although we planned very well and we debriefed very well, you're, you, you're right. And and Principal Klein's have the same thing that on balance, we did pretty well, but pretty well isn't good enough for the standards of Bloomington Public Schools. And so we've spent a lot of time now getting together and talking about how can this be better? What I've seen over the last two or three weeks are the four different entities of models that we talked about coming together to co-plan. So Bloomington Online School, the hybrid, the flex plan, and also the distance learning plan coming together and talk about of those four teams, which included administrators and teachers, what was the best that you got? What were the best ideas that you have? And so we categorized in the spring what those ideas were. The first problem that we saw was this debate about synchronous and asynchronous learning. Well, they, those teams have come up with solutions and schedules about how that could work. We talked about leaving families behind, leaving kids behind. And so I know that the principals and that team have already talked about ways to to not let that happen or ways to mitigate that in the forefront. We heard Principal Osman talk about that, about spending the first part of school, making a connection with families, making sure they have everything that they need, making sure that tech and all the different various needs are met before we launch into any type of of a formal education, if you will. One of the other things we talked about was assessment and grading. And so that continues this week. There's a meeting Thursday to put a bow on assessment and grading. What will that look like as we, if we move forward into this distance learning plan? The rigor and the content, things that we've talked about before. So all of those things have been in many, many meetings and many, many different venues to make sure we are delivering a great education. I'll take one more line from from Principal Osman before I turn it over to my colleagues that we ended the year like we were forced to end of the year. This is a great opportunity now to be able to step up and show our community what the we have amazing teachers, amazing planners here. Given this world pandemic, what can we do to make sure that we are doing the best for for our kids? And I'm proud of the work that's been done in those four groups. But again, that's generalities. I'm talking about how we've planned, how we shape our planning. I'll turn it over to the principals and others to talk about what specific thoughts that they are, that they are working on in their various committees.
Sure. I mean, the the reality is, School Board members, or is that we're going to get better, but I'm going to give you an honest answer. Three weeks from now, it's going to be better than what I gave you right now. And it's because we're going to have time and focus to take all of those thousands or hundreds of teachers and put them together and say, what are we going to do? And let's make this product better. And we've been doing that, like Andy said, at the high level and in small groups, but now we get to put the whole workforce behind it. And that workforce gets to look at it through the lens of of all, some and few for our students. So, right? What does it all look like? It starts at the, in any classroom with relationships and trust with the family and communication. And making sure our families have better access to our approaches to understand the tools and resources we're using. So at the elementary level, do they understand CSO? Do they understand MEETS? And if we're going to try to do more virtual and and face to face, do they understand how to get their kid on and and how to support them in that, right? What do the expectations look like when they're at home? How do we create resources to give to families who aren't coming to the building, but they're going to need stuff to do this well at home? So we were giving ourselves now a pathway to say, this is what our focus is going to be. And and let's take the time to really, really improve this product because this isn't what we want to do. We're a pandemic. We, this is, this is a position we're in. And so we want them to be in school, but significant staffing barriers caused us to have to make this change. And so now it's, well, let's make the best of it. And and that's, again, it starts with relationships, trust, and making sure our families have access, then giving our teachers professional development, which we've been doing now for months. Continue to give them that professional development on how to do this better and learn and watch from other districts as well. And right? And and beg, borrow and steal all the best ideas and make them our own, tailored to our Bloomington community. And so the the details, we've got ideas, but the details are going to come out when we're in school in September. And and now we've got some time to focus on that.
Yeah, I would echo that, Director Storm. I think our foundation is very strong. I think the the product that that we that we turned out in distance learning 1.0 was very, was very good, all things considered. Sure, there was areas for growth, but in a continuous improvement model, which there's going to be areas for growth everywhere. And so I know now that we need increased rigor and need to have additional support systems for some of our most at-risk students. And and that's the areas now that we will continue to make plans and structures around in order to to make distance learning a more productive experience for more of our students.
Right. And I want to say that with the middle schools and the conversation with secondary schools, like Principal Klein said, no one wants this. We want to be in school with our students. And the key piece is, how can we do it safely and provide that equitable education? And that's always the conversation we've had. We've come together as a secondary group is that what's what's it like to have equal access for all of our students and families across the district and make it a high quality experience? And that's where we come to these roadblocks. And that's where we come to these roadblocks along the way, these barriers that right now are just too challenged and overcome. So, and it's, it's been a collaborative effort of teachers and administrators working on these committees. That Andy Kubis highlighted that, you know, there's been a lot of smart people in the room. You know, and we bring back the full, the full, the full research group here next week. We'd bring all the teachers back in. That's where all the collective best thinking happens as a whole. And, uh, but it's been a lot of really good work this summer to make the best efforts to pull this off. And I think we're more in the position to make this go really well.
Thank you. Um, Director Olson, I think I saw you raising your hand before.
Okay. So I guess, uh, I was thinking that I have a question, but I did not ask it in advance. So maybe it's just one to think about, but I do think the world needs to hear it, Director Corman. So I hope you're okay with that. All right. So we all want our schools to be fully open for all our students, staff and family in our community. And the only way for this to happen is for our community and the citizens of Bloomington to acknowledge that this pandemic is real. Everyone needs to be on board with the public health guidelines to defeat this pandemic once and for all. So my question is, how can we, the administration and the school board of ISD 271, help to make this happen? And I really hope that we can all think about that, if not answer it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bibi. Director Bibi, your microphone is up.
Thank you. Um, I'm glad to hear that we're going to be doing more supports because that's really critical. Whether it means bringing in the students into the schools, because that's one thing that I had hoped. But it sounds like if there is a student that is needing help, that we're able to still give them some of those supports. So that's helpful. I also had asked the, the question about what kind of professional development has been done for our teachers? And I'm glad to hear what's being done and what has been done and what will be done. So it's, it sounds like it's been happening more than I, I had any knowledge of. And so just really my, my hat is off to you all. And I really appreciate that because I sensed just the overwhelmingly of this task on teachers. Received some emails from teachers with, you know, significant concerns. And, and having been a teacher and been thrown into something like the week before school, I was just feeling on their heart that, you know, we need to make sure that we, we give them the supports they need. One of the things that was brought up by Commissioner Mary Catherine Ricker at a Association of Metro School District meeting on Friday morning was the concept of meaningful interaction that needs to take place in order for, um, distance learning to be effective. And so, um, I'm wondering if anybody has also heard this and how they plan to encourage teachers in doing this? And if, if it's something that's new, maybe down the road, um, you know, we could talk more about it. But, um, so there's, there's that side to it. And along with the meaningful interaction, um, I also have been attending the Minnesota School Board Association Summer Seminar, and they brought in an excellent speaker, Dr. Yuli Wells, who, um, has an organization called Please Pass the Love. And she talks about the importance of school mental health. And I haven't really heard much addressed in that, except for counseling will be available. There is significant trauma in the community that, um, Dr. Yuli Wells brought up because of COVID. And our students will be coming in with that trauma and with the families and what they've experienced, either through job loss or more stress in their families. And, you know, I've actually connected with a family that's going through some pretty difficult things. And, and so they're asking for supports. But one of the things that was very sobering to me, and I wanted to, to share this with you because I think we actually need some professional development in this area. And it was about related to COVID, there will be a very large number of suicides. It is predicted by two specialists that there will be 50 to 70,000 suicides nationwide related to COVID. And she said, it's not a matter of if it comes to your school district, but when it comes to your school district, are you prepared? And I'm really thankful that our district actually has, um, a greater number of counselors, students ratio, but the needs are going to be intensifying. So I'm just concerned that we address that at some point. And, um, and I have permission to pass on the notes from that seminar. And, um, it would be good to also get some other resources. But that's very much a big concern for me, given the trauma that's happened. And I'm seeing it around me with different people. People get frozen, um, you know, our routines are changed, your schedules are changed. Our dynamics in our families have changed. So I don't know if anybody wants to address that at all, but I appreciate that.
Director Bibi, I would love to address that first, and I don't need to be the only one to respond. But I just want to say, I think you've made a really excellent connection because when you talked about meaningful interactions to start off, you know, what you were saying here. The first thing I thought of was yes, meaningful interactions that help us with our academics and help students, uh, of course, learn some of the material, the material that they're learning in their classes, but also meaningful interactions that get us to a place where we're addressing mental health. We're working with social emotional learning. And, um, you know, I'll just, I'll give you some examples of things that make me excited or feel hopeful that have happened in the last couple of weeks. And of course, that's not, um, it's not an exhaustive list of examples, but a couple of the things I think of right away are, we had our summer leadership academy last week where we brought together all of our site leaders and then they're building leadership teams. And we did an example of what a restorative practices circle would look like. Uh, and we talked about how this is a way you can address social emotional learning and social and emotional and mental health for adults as well. And so we modeled that practice, helped our site leaders and our staff, our staff leaders see how to do that in the hopes that they'll also bring it to their sites. And that's just, like I said, one example. A second example I think of is we've, we've, um, changed our IDs, the information, our student IDs to include a, a helpline for students. So if they'd like to reach out, they have that information right there in handy. So, um, I guess I'll just say again, as I, I really appreciate you bringing this up and, and making that connection between the, the meaningful inner, meaningful interactions for academic achievement, but also for, um, mental wellness and, and just wellness for the whole child. So thank you for that.
Director Bibi, this is Executive Director Jennifer McIntyre. And I wanted to add to that, I've been working with, uh, Dr. Mitchler and Dr. Coin as well in this area. And we've been looking at partnering with MDE and MDH as they've brought out the Cognito Suicide Prevention online program that's open for any school to utilize this, this school year. And so we have participated in that and accessed it. And that will be something that all of our employees in our district will be able to access and will be providing opportunity for professional development throughout the next couple of weeks for all of our employees in that area. It's an online service. And so students and families will also access that virtually as, as we're making some decisions around what we're doing moving forward. We also have been really looking closely at what our social work team has done. They provided the resources over the summer, but then preparing for coming back this fall, knowing and you're spot on with the amount of trauma and areas of need that we will, will continue to have. And our social workers are preparing for that as long, as well as our school counselors, our school psychologists, um, knowing that that will be the frontline work that we'll have to do.
Thank you so much. That's very encouraging.
Thank you. And we know this, this trauma is experienced by students, you know, by families and also by teachers and staff members, you know? No one is exempt from, from having those, um, those type of challenges. So it will be really important, you know, as we start working, um, in any of the learning models that we pay close attention to how, how we're all doing, uh, where we're at when we start. And, you know, I, as Director Bibi said, when Commissioner of Education talked about the importance of having, of developing those relationships with the kids, she also talked about curriculum content and how as important as it is that we also understand that it cannot be the first priority. Because, you know, we know, we understand those are needs. Yeah, we live in a competitive society. We want everyone to be, uh, first and the best and to have great skills. But at the same time, we know very well that, uh, learning cannot take place if, if the brain is not prepared for that. And those, um, social emotional, um, skills are so important to really be open for learning to take place. So, thank you. Um, anybody else, other board members who have other questions before we go on our second round of questions? Director Bennett?
Yes. So first of all, I just want to say thanks to our principals and BFT president for joining us tonight. And really I want to thank the entire district, the, the teachers and the, the admin and everyone that was involved in, in coming up with these learning plans and working the whole summer. And I don't think anyone on this call has gotten a good night's sleep in the last two months. And I really want to honor that work. And there is no right way to open up schools in the midst of a pandemic. And whatever option we come up with, there's pros and cons. And the more you look at one plan, the more cons you find. And one of my, my biggest, um, of the biggest cons to me in the district, in the distance learning is that is establishing relationships, especially with our, our youngest children. And establishing relationships online is going to be difficult. So I'm wondering if at the start of the year, when we're doing our, our early assessment that we usually do before school starts, is that still going to be in person? So that the, the student and a teacher will have that one-on-one opportunity to make some of those connections and relationships? And are we going to have any of that type of opportunity for any of our other students? So I don't know if anyone can answer that question.
Director Bennett, I'll jump in and with us is our new Director of Curriculum Instruction, Beth Flotmeyer. And so I know Beth has been working with Dr. Heistad's office to, to have that conversation. Beth, I call on you to update, uh, with, with the latest of where we are with early assessment.
Sure. Um, so we're trying to work out how it would, how we would do this in a hybrid or not a hybrid model. And I have to talk with, um, Jackie Johns a little bit also on what will be the protocol of students, having students into the building as well. Because we know, we didn't want parents to come in, but we also want parents to be able to meet the teacher, say hello, you know, start building those relationships. So I also have a meeting scheduled with the elementary principals tomorrow to be able to start discussions on what it will look like in a distance learning model. So we're working on it. We have some thoughts and, um, are trying to figure out if it's viable to have, um, students come in. We would prefer to have students and teachers meet face to face. I think that would be preferred, but not sure if that's going to be viable.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Director Stagaf, I cannot see you in my layout, so I'm not sure if you have, if you're raising your hand.
Sure. I just have, I just have a question, um, from the community that I've been asked that, um, I'm hoping, um, Director Burrows can answer. But before I do that, I just also want to say thank you to everyone too. You know, it's not that any of us ever wanted to be in this place and ever dreamed that any of us would ever be in this place, did we? If you think back last year when we started school, who would have thought this is where we'd be? So, um, thank you to everyone who's been working on this, um, really since March. I mean, that's when things changed for all of us, right? And so thank you to everyone that's from administration to teachers to pairs, to custodians, everyone that's been working on this. But my question is, um, if you could address please, um, like if, if multiple staff need to take the leave that you outlined earlier, um, then what about, I've been asked about what about subs? So if you could just, I know what's happening with subs, but if you could explain to the community in the past year, like teacher subs and para subs, where we are with that? So they understand that we can't really fill these spots with subs?
Okay. Yeah. So subs, subbing in the metro has been a challenge the last couple of years. I think people have heard many times about, um, shortage of subs and that that is an issue for most metro districts, if not all of us. We did send the same type of survey out to our subs this summer, uh, asking if they intended to return. We sent it out, I want to say late June, again, um, to see what the people were feeling. And I would say about 60% said they would return. But, uh, I want to say at least 20% of that was with great concerns. So, you know, they had a lot of questions about safety, things that we would be offering subs or will we be providing masks to subs or the same type of, you know, sick leave or, you know, that, that they could have as they came into our schools. So a lot of questions there. So that kind of took our already strained sub pool down quite a bit. We did some marketing to try to get, uh, new subs in the system. And so far today, we have 18 applicants. So not a lot of people are jumping on that right now. Um, I did hear also from Christine, uh, last night, she sent out a, uh, concern about para subs. Usually we do send out a letter every year asking, you know, is it, you're intent to return or sub for us this year? We only heard from about 40% of our para subs. So that pool would also be, uh, probably lower than what we would hope it to be at this point. So subbing will be a challenge. It, it won't be easy. Yeah. It wasn't easy before COVID just added a whole complex on top of it. So.
Thank you. Chair Corman, since we're going to start our second round, can I ask my second question now? All right. Thank you. Um, I just, I, I wanted to know a little bit more. I just want to thank everybody for the support. That I think that's a critical piece of this that we didn't have in the spring to be able to have some of these supports in place. It's my understanding though, that there's possibility that there could be even some in-person supports, what we saw in the presentation. And along with that, the question I have too is, I've seen other districts around us that are trying a gradual, where they're letting like one grade per building maybe is their plan right now, or two grades per building. Is there a possibility that, um, further down the road? If, you know, if we can do some in-person supports, um, that we, you know, that other things are further down the road, that this isn't just for today? I guess I'm trying to ask you. I'm assuming that there's going to be lots of, as the governor says, changes of the dial throughout the year. So maybe if people would like to expand on that a little bit, thank you.
I, I can jump in, uh, Director Stagaf. So yeah, that was one of the key parts of our support plan was that we wanted to be able to have the option to bring in students and/or families and staff that, that are willing to, to work with kids. And we want to be able, you know, while we want to flesh out what exactly that could mean at various levels, knowing that from last spring, you know, everyone was forbidden from being in the building to this fall where you, we, we can in a very staggered and safe manner. We want to be able to provide that opportunity, whether it's for tech support, for one-on-one tutoring, for, you know, mental health support group, for meetings with counselors, meeting with administrators, meeting with teachers in a, in a safe spot. We want to be able to provide that opportunity. We believe we will, and it will in fact be a good, uh, test case for us to testing out some procedures some from a safety perspective. That is something that we are very eager and excited to be able to build, build upon. Um, I don't know that I have a much vibration on the, on the staggered adding of grades and stuff like that. Maybe that's someone else's spot, but that is, that is our hope for the, for the providing opportunities in the building.
Thank you.
Director Stagaf, I was going to say I can jump in a bit about, uh, our special education programming. As we were building out the hybrid model and we've been putting extensive work this summer into that to see what that could look like. We started to build out some metrics around decision-making for students who could potentially have additional services within our schools. And, and now as we start to look at this model, we would look to see. based on that information on health and safety, of course, of our students, staff, community. And then students who perhaps distance learning or remote learning, it's not accessible for them through educational, the way that they learn or the way that they receive information. We would look to those students to say, okay, could we start to provide one-to-one services and how would we do that? Bringing students into the, into the school and we'd start to phase that in and definitely work with our practitioners. I'm thankful for the time to get to work with our teachers and our other staff to say, how could we make that happen? As we all, I all know that there are some students who just did not benefit from distance learning. So we definitely have taken that as a note to say, let's sit down and work with our practitioners, our teachers and our peer professionals and figure out how could we make that a possibility for some of our students.
Thank you.
If I could also add in from the EL standpoint, one of our major takeaways from the spring is that many of our EL families struggled, just generically speaking. And so right away, Beth standing in line and her team worked with their Office of Educational Equity and started to address what can we do differently if this happens next time? And so they've worked together to come up with some strategies. One I mentioned earlier about outreach before school, making a connection with their families before school, making sure that they have what they need, using some of their multicultural tools that were developed this summer in partnership, making sure that we're not just sending emails to people in their language. That's certainly not the way to check the box and say, hey, we, we send it in their language, but following up, making sure people understand. And so having a protocol, well thought out protocol to make sure that we're not leaving our families behind again in the, in the English language area.
Thank you. Thank you.
Director Starks, I think you have a question.
I do. So actually I have a point of order if I know my Robert's rules well enough. Is there a resolution on the table? Is there like, okay, because I'm, I'm kind of, I'm trying to, I have so many questions, but I'm trying to make sure that I'm asking questions that are actually going to get us to our, our decision-making or endpoint. So I don't know if we can talk about the resolution soon, or just so I know where we're headed.
Well, anybody can make a motion at this point for resolution and then we can have a discussion after that.
Right. So it's not my intent to cut off discussion at all.
That's a good point. I, I think if all other board members are okay with that, we can maybe bring a resolution now or a, or a motion at this point.
What if I, if I motion and then we'll see if anybody seconds, because if they don't, then it's a moot point. So I motion to bring forward the resolution as written from the school district.
I second Olson.
Okay. So resolution, I'm sorry, motion was brought up by Director Starks and then it was seconded by Director Olson. And this is to bring a resolution, correct? At this point? Yeah. Okay. So all those in favor of this motion, please say aye. Let's start with Director Stigov.
I think I'm going to need some clarification here. Superintendent has his hand up. I think we have a, I think we have a, I think she's bringing for the resolution is what I'm thinking, but if that was not the intent, I'm going to let the superintendent.
Her motion is to bring up a resolution, correct? Director Starks?
Yes, so that I know where our decision, what the decision that's going to be in front of us at the end of this conversation. Cause if I, this, sorry, this is maybe just a me thing, but if I don't know where we're headed, I don't know what questions to ask.
Yeah, that's a good point. Superintendent Fujita.
We don't have, to make sure I'm not muted. We need to make sure we, I want to, we don't have a pre-prepared resolution for the board to consider. If you want, I can make another recommendation to the board and the board can act upon my recommendation based upon what you've heard so far. Would you be open to receiving a recommendation from me?
Yes, I would say yes. Everybody okay with that? And then based on that recommendation, we can bring up a resolution tonight. Okay, Director Sorum.
Yeah, I think that's a little bit premature. We're here just to gather information, you know, so all questions are applicable because we don't really know what it's going to be. I mean, the viable option that they're talking about, it certainly is a possible resolution or motion or recommendation. But I, I would just soon hear from our attorney about the procedure. We have a lot of discussion and information to hear from first before we make a recommendation, I think.
Okay. Does it seem like we have more questions? Well, we can always bolden that and then continue on to questions if that does not pass. I don't know if, let's see, Mr. David Holman, do you have a suggestion?
Yes. Chair Corman, a little confusing on the process you had there. If Director Starks was trying to bring forward a motion, I wasn't sure if she was trying to reinstate the motion you made on August 3rd, or if it was some different motion. I think right now what you've got is a meeting and this is an agenda item. Somebody can make a motion to change the model you're going to use in the coming year. Basically that would require a motion to amend something previously adopted. Once you make that motion, it's still subject to all the discussion and debate going on. Right now you're kind of working on a system that you use for your study sessions. And that you've got a, an issue before you and everybody's just discussing it, which is fine. But this is a special meeting, so at some point somebody can make a motion to, let's say amend your August 3rd resolution or or whatever you have in mind. I'm not putting any ideas in your head, but it, it should be a little clearer than the motion Ms. Starks tried to make.
Okay. Can I rescind my motion? I derailed the conversation. That was not my intent. I'm, my apologies.
That's okay, Director Starks. It was a good point. Director Bennett?
It's already been seconded, so it's no longer Director Starks' motion. It's the board's motion. We need to vote on it before we move on.
Okay. So let's just move, but you need, what we need is clarification on that motion, it seems like. So Director Starks, can you restate that motion? Because it seems like we had other board members that were still wanting to ask more questions before we went into the conversation.
Correct. And so that's, that's why I said I'm not trying to cut off, cut off discussion. That's not my intent. Okay. There's no resolution to say we are recommending, for example, distance learning. So if that's what's in front of us, then I would ask questions related to distance learning if the, you know. So I guess I'm just, it was a presentation with a lot of information. We're just going to be asking information related to the presentation and then move forward after?
I guess there were people who still had questions in relation to the presentation. All right. Yeah. But then Mr. Holman, do we need to vote now that the motion was put on the table?
Well, if the, if the seconder would rescind the second, you don't have to. And I'm not sure who seconded.
I did. So I'll rescind my second. Is that good?
Okay. So yes. So let's do this. All board members, let's finish our questions in relation to this presentation. And then if someone is ready, please bring up that motion. Okay. Is that okay? Director Sorum?
Yes, thank you. Yeah. And that would probably be the appropriate way to go about after a little bit of discussion, then all of a sudden somebody might want to. If we, if we get down the line where we are thinking of distance learning, but I have a couple more questions that pertain to elementary school as well as the middle school and possibly the high school. And that's our specialty classes that we have, the band, music, art, FIED. Some of those, you know, how are they going to be handled? Distance learning. My one grandson played or the, the band, he had to play his trumpet in a big song that was going to be part of others. So he did a video where we all watched and then he submitted that to the band instructor to get a grade. So in music and art and FIED, some of those things that are significant for the elementary schools. How, how is that going to be handled? Distance learning.
I think I can reply to that. So what, what the hybrid team recommended was a model that would transcend all of the models for the elementary specialists. So what we're looking at, the recommendations that came out of our hybrid committee was that specialist would teach one specific group of kids, so one class for, in a grade level for two weeks. So they would start teaching like mini units. And then if we had to pivot and transition into another model, that same schedule and rotation would continue to take place. So we're looking at just having a different model for specialists instead of having a rotation of one, two, three, or four, if that makes sense to you. So kids wouldn't go to art, music, PE, FIED. Concurrent, on concurrent days, they would take four days of art, then they would have four days of PE. Then they would have four days of music. And then band would be a little bit different. Fred Blue, who is our, our main band teacher, I believe is looking at doing most of his teaching remotely.
Thank you. And it seems like we have a request from the public, from the administrators who are answering questions. If you can please say who you are, when people are wondering who are the administrators talking, since there was no formal introduction from the very beginning, so to each one of you. So if you could please let us know who you are next time you respond to questions. Okay, Director Olson.
One thing that hasn't been brought up is preschool and Early Learners Academy. How that is, is that falling in line with these other plans? Or is that going to be different?
Good question, Director Olson. Jake Winchell, Executive Director of Community Education. Early childhood, early childhood programs, preschool will run, will follow the K through 12 model. So we will also pivot to whatever model K through 12 is in. Early Learners Academy will be a little bit different. We will run that more as childcare. And that, so that would be able to stay open and remain open at our existing sites in a smaller cohort than what we normally have for those classrooms.
Thank you.
Director Bennett?
Oh yes. So since we're talking about childcare, I kind of have a follow-up question since we're, if, well, we haven't decided yet, but if it goes the way that we're all expecting, that we go to distance learning, is there going to be any type of capacity or desire to start some type of childcare program for our early elementary students who, whose parents have to work and might be looking for any type of childcare? Is there any, any discussion about that?
Quick clarification, are you thinking early childhood or are you thinking elementary age students?
I'm thinking elementary, like K, K three students where parents need to work and, and they're looking for childcare options. And I think, you know, if we could build capacity, we would do a better job at it than a private daycare. That's just, you know, that's my opinion anyway.
Right. At this point, our plan is to offer childcare at two sites like we did last spring. At the same capacity as what we had been planning for in the hybrid model, which we are hoping for 300 students. So we're looking at using Poplar Bridge and Indian Mountains Elementary School in a distance learning scenario. The, the challenge of staffing, we have the space. If we could get the staffing up, I think we'd be able to expand that capacity as well. But as I've mentioned in past meetings, we've been trying to, to get the staffing figured out, to get people in. We've had people turn down interviews when they hear what the pay rate is. So that has been our struggle with building capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions in relation to this presentation tonight? Director BB? Director BB, your microphone's up.
My question was partially answered by Jennifer McIntyre, but I still, I'm still kind of wondering. I talked with a para who was concerned about some of the students and maybe you've included these students already. But those that are in self-contained classrooms and and how distance learning just didn't work for them. It wasn't easy at all. And maybe you've already covered that, but I was hoping that with the, the hybrid model being accepted based on the number of cases of COVID per 10,000. I was wondering if those classes, I'm kind of asking on behalf of this para, if those classes could be held two days a week for those students?
Thank you, Director BB. This is Executive Director Jennifer McIntyre for Special Education. And we, we talked a bit about it, but I, the students whom you're talking to about, we have really given careful consideration to, and we will continue to. They are students who we really want to look at maintaining the, the ability to keep them healthy and safe as well as the staff, because oftentimes there are students who are doing hand over hand and we're working really closely, personally closely with, with those students. And we want to make sure that we're, we're providing them with the supports that we can, but then also being sure to, to keep our, our students and our, our staff safe with what we're putting in place. So with that said, they are the students that we have the most concern and thinking through, how can we provide services for them? If we're looking at bringing some of our students in, what will that look like? How will that look in a model? Is it shorter days? Is it more days a week? How would that look? And that definitely is something that we have been talking through as a special education team, leadership team, we've looked through. We've brought in some of our teachers and our related service providers, our physical therapists, occupational therapists, to really discuss some of the students in which we would highly consider bringing supports in, bringing them into the, the school to provide those supports. Now I say that, and I also know we're keeping an eye on what the, the case rates look like and really being sure that we're able to balance it out between our staff and our students and being able to, to support them. But that is a area that we will continue to, to look at. I know that that is very challenging in our community and with, with our families to, to consider, how do we get those supports, knowing we're not going into homes and we're not going out into the community? So for sure, that is a, is an area that will be the first that we will address.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Director Sorum?
I, yes, you know, continuing along with some of this band, music, art, FIED. What about how is distance learning? How are we going to handle extracurricular activities, clubs, organizations, plays, musicals, and sports? I know that's come up and there's a couple of different different approaches that different districts are taking. So who wants to handle that?
I'll jump in. This is Jason Anderson, Principal Jefferson High School. And I know the activities directors are on this, so maybe Chad and John, if you want to jump in in just a moment. So one thing I'll say to that is knowing how important those activities are, this this situation that we, we all find ourselves in is really having a result, having the result of having students and student advisors being really creative in how they continue their, things that they're passionate about. So I, I know already student groups that are finding new and unique ways to meet and new and unique ways to, to continue their mission. So I've already been on conversations with several student groups and how they can proceed. And so that I, I'm confident that we will be creative in those, for those, for those activities and the clubs and those extracurriculars. Groups like theater and groups like music are again trying, are, are finding ways, student-driven. So in, in and of itself, in a sense, there is a really unique passion and problem solving that's coming out of our student groups to, to continue to meet those needs. But the activities directors are on, if they want to speak more about sports. But the activities directors are on if they want to speak more about sports as a specific topic. Chatter, John?
Yeah. John Anderson, Activities Director Bloom to Kennedy High School. Because we are making, we are electing to go into distance learning, if that's the decision that is made. With our sports programs, we can continue to offer our sports programs that are that started today. Today was the very first day. Every sports plan, sports team has a plan that they committed with more schools and have are following the guidelines, not only set out by the Minnesota Department of Health on the youth sport guidelines, but also the sport specific recommendations and guidelines set out by the Minnesota State High School.
And the same would go true for non-sanctioned high school league, things that could be theater, could be marching band. As long as we can follow MDH guidelines and cross off with with our with our school nurses or school nurse like Jackie in terms of getting clearance on that stuff. We'll run as much as we can, as long as it's safe unless we're, you know, the only reason we wouldn't, in essence, is that there weren't enough kids, an advisor, or the MDH, MD, MDE guidelines, guidelines would tell us that we can't do it.
Thank you. So before we go into a recommendation and possibly a motion and discussion, anybody else have any other questions? Remember, you can also ask more questions later. Director Starks.
Can I ask a follow up question to the sports and activities? If we are in distance learning, there will not be any transportation for students to get to and from school. So how will transportation be handled for students that want to participate in sports and activities?
Students would have to provide, or students and fans have to provide their own transportation to school for practices and for games. You know, currently, you know, we, like I said, we started sports today. And we will run sports this week and next week and the following week when we're all not in school or we're planning to be in school. And we are asking parents to get their kids to school on those days as well. So we don't provide transportation. And then with the reduced season, that's near over a quarter of the season before we even, school even starts, we'll be done for the fall. And we weren't planning on providing transportation for those students who weren't in person under the hybrid option as well. So with this, we're not going to be able to provide, we don't, we're not providing transportation to school for practices or games. I will say in my, in my 20th year at Kennedy High School and most of those years coaching or being this role at Kennedy, we typically don't have a problem with students getting to Kennedy for practice and for games. You know, if that's different than if we ask them to travel to Cooper or Chaska or Chan, that may be an issue. But, you know, we're still going to provide bus transportation for those who need it for our games.
And I think I saw Director, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Nibber, were you going to say something?
Nope.
Okay, I saw your microphone on. Mr. Sarum, you had another question? Your microphone is up?
Yes, is, and I don't know, it can come up later on also, but we haven't really talked about budget considerations yet, because, you know, with our staffing concerns and with our whatever might be coming up, you know, transportation and some of the other aspects, fact that we are going to be going into another budgeting cycle, I don't know if this is if Rod is available to talk about, you know, the money that we have gotten from CARES, how that's going to be distributed and some of those other types of things like that. Are we getting, are we going to be getting into any kind of budget trouble?
This Rod Zifkovich, Executive Director of Finance and Support Services for the District. Director Sarum, at this point in time, I think we are balancing our budget to the needs of using the CARES dollars for all the whether it be additional staffing, whether it be extra personal protection equipment, all the different pieces that we need. At this point, we don't see any, whether if we're going to a distant learning or staying in a hybrid, do not see any significant long-term budget aspects to that or consequences to that. The issue just comes down to, as we've talked many times, is our biggest thing is enrollment. And it's it's how many students stay in the district and go with our different programming.
Thank you.
Director Bennett.
Yeah. So if the decision is made that we're going to start the year in distance learning, then I was wondering what happens to the Bloomington Online School? Does that just go away and everyone goes back to their neighborhood school and distant learns from their school? Or are those families still locked in those Bloomington Online School? Or will there be new enrollment opportunities for parents that want to switch? So I don't know if anyone can kind of give me some more idea of what we're going to do with the Bloomington Online School.
Director Bennett, I'll take that question. This is John Weiser, Executive Director of Technology and Information Services. No, Bloomington Online School is going, I want to say going strong since since the board's decision two weeks ago, we've added seats primarily at the high school level. So now we have 1,250 students choosing Bloomington Online. The waitlist has shrunk, but 40 new people have added themselves to the waitlist. So while we've been able to accommodate 75 of those students waiting, another 40 some have added to that waitlist. We, in talking to those families, they're looking for, I want to say, the most stable of the probably all the school plans. Not that that's a bad thing, but it is an attribute on which families can count. So you can figure out your daycare one time. You can rest assured you'll have a consistent model throughout the year. You can start to form, we probably all heard of the the forming of neighborhood groups around supporting families. And so we know that activity is taking place as well. No, we're super excited about Bloomington Online School. It's, we're going to open on the first day with all the other schools.
Okay, well, why I ask the question is because I'm sure that there's many parents that that opted for the Bloomington Online School because the the deadline to enroll was right after we announced the the flex model and it really, the flex model really wasn't fleshed out all that well. So I think a lot of families might have signed up for Bloomington Online School because they felt that that was the the best plan at the time. But now that we're saying we're going distance learning, I would, I would wager a guess that there's going to be families out there that say, oh, well, if we're doing distance learning, I want my kid back in in my neighborhood school with their neighborhood teachers, neighborhood friends. So are we going to give those parents an option before school starts to transfer out of Bloomington Online School?
I hear a couple of things. This is John Weiser, again, Director of Technology. I hear a couple of things in your question. One is some speculation as to how families make, made the decision before and how they might change their decision. So yes, I think we do need a window of opportunity. We, you know, like, I'll, I'll say the same thing I've heard other people in this meeting say, which is there is a sense of urgency to settle a back to school plan such that we can do thoughtful planning. And so that window would have to be pretty short. But we recognize that people probably, if the board makes a new decision, that we would have to allow some short window for families to adjust to that decision. And then I will, I will just add a qualifier, which is the families that are showing up at our Q and A sessions and our open houses and that we're communicating with the email. I, I think they're enthused about the opportunities in Bloomington Online School and that a decision to move to distance learning, I sense, wouldn't change at least those that are engaging with us. It wouldn't change their minds for a variety of reasons, but I don't want to speak on behalf of, you know, 1,200 families.
Yeah, neither do I. But thank you for answering that question. I think, you know, I feel better that they will have an opportunity, even if it's a short window. So I think if we go and change plans, that might change some other people's desires. And we just kind of have to honor that. So thank you.
And Director Bibi, before I go to you, that brings me also to the question for the superintendent. We're talking about the possibility of distance learning here. For how long are we, are we contemplating distance learning? What does this mean? I mean, are we saying that, is your recommendation that we started and go for a period of time? Or then eventually, what is going to happen there?
I think, can I go back to what I would suggest the process steps be for board to take right now?
Director Bibi, are you okay with that? I don't know if your question can wait. Okay, go ahead, Superintendent.
Okay, so August 3rd Board Resolution, I'm paraphrasing states that the school board adopts the hybrid instructional delivery model as recommended by administration. And administration is directed to work toward its implementation by the start of the 2021 school year. That's what the resolution states. Administration has been acting as directed by the board by this resolution to implement the hybrid instructional delivery model. That is, that is the purpose of this meeting. Administration has worked on this implementation and has discovered that the model is not viable because of operational staffing challenges. Therefore, my, my recommendation is that the board consider rescinding the August 3rd resolution. Because it's the model that the board approved is not viable. And my second recommendation is that the board then consider a motion to adopt another instructional delivery model and to direct administration to work toward its implementation. So those would be, that would be my suggestion. And then the board can make a motion as far as what instructional delivery model they would like and other things such as how long that model would be in place if it is the distance learning model. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Superintendent. I don't want to leave Director Bibi without asking her questions. So I don't know what you think, Director Bibi. I don't know if there's anyone who will.
I can respond to her question if you want me to go there. I will. If you are looking at going, the board adopting the distance learning instructional delivery model, how long would it be in place? Is that your thing?
Yes.
Question? My response would be that we would be looking at doing an assessment sometime at the end of September, beginning of October, and reporting back to the board on our assessment about the distance learning model, how long that could be in place. And then reporting what, because we need to study what other districts are doing. If they've gone to a hybrid model, can they successfully pull it off? What, what will we learn about their implementation of that model? And can we copy what they've done? And then implement it here? As far as their staff, I believe they're going to encounter same staffing challenges, but how did they overcome that staffing challenge? We have not been able to come up with a solution.
And we're also depending on how this pandemic behaves.
That's exactly right, Chair Corman.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that the public also understands that this, if this decision, if there's a decision made tonight to move into the distance learning model, that this doesn't necessarily mean that it will be for the entire school year. So take that into consideration. Okay. So, okay, so the Superintendent has made a recommendation. I know Director Bibi has one more question, I guess, before we, I don't know if anybody, well, before we had this conversation, this discussion, we need to have a motion put in place. So before we move into that, then Director Bibi, do you want to ask your question?
I can ask it later. This is more important right now.
Okay. So is, is there a motion? Well, we will have to consider two things here, two motions here. Remember that the first one, based on his recommendation, is that we the rescinding of the previous resolution of our August 3rd. And then the next one would be in the adopting another instructional model, which is the one recommended tonight by administration, which is distance learning as we start the school year. Anyone ready to take that step?
Chair Corman?
Yes.
You could do it in one motion, just by amending the prior resolution. So just changing the instructional model. Vote to amend your prior resolution by changing the instructional model.
Thank you. Would someone like to make that motion? Okay, Director Bennett.
Well, I would make that motion, but by my understanding that to make a motion to reconsider the previous motion, it has to be made by someone who votes, voted with the majority. So therefore, I wouldn't be able to make that motion. So someone else who voted for the previous motion should be making this motion, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else besides me that wants to do or is willing to bring that motion? Director Starks?
Well, can I ask for a clarification so I don't derail things again?
Go ahead.
If I, if I put this motion forward, there's still discussion to follow, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then I, as a member of the majority from the previous resolution, motion to amend the resolution from August 3rd. Do I have to say we're amending it too, Mr. Holman?
It's always a good idea. I think you're just amending the instructional model.
So amending the instructional model from hybrid to distance learning. Do I also need to put a date on it?
No, you don't.
Okay.
Okay, do we need to have any additions to to then have our administration? You know, after they look at this and how it's going to change that model without having a back?
You still have that as part of the original resolution, I believe.
We do?
I think that was, I think that was part of your original resolution, was that the administration could continue to review things.
Believe it was, no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Okay, Director, I guess.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not answering your question, though. I just wanted to ask if Director Starks would add on the end of that motion with supports. I think that's an important piece, and I don't want that to be left off by accident. So thank you.
Okay, so Director Starks, we will need you to say the motion or move this again in adding all those elements.
Okay, Mr. Holman, you're going to tell me if I do this wrong, right?
Okay, before you do that.
Superintendent Fujisaki, yes.
I want to clarify something for David Holman. The resolution reads as follows, resolved that the school board of Independent School District 271 adopts the hybrid instructional delivery model as recommended by the administration. And that the administration is directed to work toward its implementation by the start of the 2021 school year, period. That is the scope, that is the, that is the resolution. Doesn't talk about changing the model thereafter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Starks, are you ready?
I'm going to give it a shot. So I motion to amend the August 3rd resolution to state the distance learning with to state the distance learning with supports model in place of hybrid model.
And then allowing administration to, to change the model as needed?
Are we putting that in there? I feel like that should be a discussion before we put that in there.
I know it's the recommendation of MSBA, but it's up to the board, of course.
I'm not comfortable putting that in without discussion.
I'll, I'll second Director Stark's motion as she read it, or said it, or whatever.
Perfect, okay, so we have a, a motion here by Director Starks, and it was seconded by Director Stiga. Okay, and we all understood that motion, so all those in favor of this motion, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Are we not going to have any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm thinking about that resolution of, well, never mind. Okay, so, okay, we have moved and we have the second, now we have the discussion and additional questions, conversation. Okay. Let's go for it. Director Stark, go ahead.
Well, so this question is related to a timeline, as it's not in the resolution right now, but you had discussed Superintendent Fujitaki about potentially saying we're only doing this for three or four weeks before we reevaluate. So my question is, what metrics are going to be used to determine if we can move back into a hybrid model? When I was watching the, the presentations from the principals, a lot of the reasons that they gave for not being able to go to a hybrid model, to me, seem pretty constant and not variables. So I'm wondering what will change between now and September 30th, or whatever date we choose, that would allow for us to go into a hybrid model that's not true today?
I can respond. Several things. One would be how COVID transmission data occurs in schools after the start of school year. Another would be if other school districts are successful in implementing the hybrid model, what are they doing? Another would be if some new testing system comes up for COVID, a more rapid test, where we can ensure some better safety and better tracking of staff, because it all depends, will staff feel more comfortable with these measures in coming back to work and dropping their accommodation requests? So those are just some of the examples of what would be, would allow us to reconsider the hybrid model.
Director Bennett, I saw your hand up before. Director Olson.
Oh, go ahead. I don't, I don't have a question, sorry.
Director Olson.
That would be, that would have to come before us for another vote, vote, correct? If, if that were to change, if
Yes.
the administration recommended that we go to hybrid sometime during the year, that would have to come before, just like this. Right? And I love the pros and cons, by the way, and everything they put together, so that would have to be presented to us again to change it, and we would vote on it, correct? Okay.
Correct. Director Bennett?
Well, then that's the discussion we need to have as a board. Do we want to be the ones who make the decision to change, or do we want to give that authority to the superintendent in consultation with the chair about changing, if we wanted to change back to hybrid? That's kind of what the discussion I think we need to have, is if we just, if it's, you know, the superintendent and the chair get to decide, then we don't have to worry about doing, calling a meeting before we change models, but the benefit of us making the decision is that we can come back and have a thorough discussion, ask questions, so I don't know if anyone has any preference either way. The way it sits now, it would be, it would have to come back before the board.
Yeah. Superintendent?
That would be my preference, that it comes back before the board.
Well, it seems like the task was given to the board about a month ago, right? Little less than that. Anyone else? Director Sorum?
Yeah, just thinking about that too, then, then everybody here at the meeting tonight has to be aware that the potential could be going to a hybrid model at some point in time, if all of the other factors are met and we, you know, slide out, there's vaccines or whatever else it is that, that's going to, it's going to come. All right.
Before I go with Director Starks, anybody else? Any questions who have not asked? Okay, Director Starks, and then Director Olson.
So my question is probably for Executive Director Kubis, or someone maybe from your staff. Do you have, could you give us like an overview of what a typical day might look like for a student in distance learning?
Sure, I can, I can again tee it off. I'll defer to Director Flotmeyer, who's been involved in both the hybrid and the other meetings, but what we've been working on are synchronous and asynchronous schedules for both hybrid and distance learning at all three levels. So elementary has a schedule that they're working on, high school, we'll talk about the schedule that they're working on, and middle school has done the same thing, and so I'll turn it over to Director Flotmeyer to just give the high, high arching overviews of what those schedules would look like as in a typical day.
Okay, so this is Director Flotmeyer of Curriculum Instruction. And so I'm going to speak to the elementary model, because I've been working with that group the most, and then I'm going to defer to Principal Ingham and Principal Anderson to take on the middle school and high school models, but to give you just kind of an overview, we're looking at doing synchronous learning for like a morning meeting at the elementary level, so that we have check-ins with students every single day, talking about our social emotional learning, and then also having small group synchronous learning for students throughout the day. And then, again, asynchronous times for when kids can do whole group types of learning with activities, then to be supported from that time, and again, with specialists in that time as well. So I'm going to defer to Principal Ingham to talk about the middle school schedule.
Hi, Brian Ingham, and Principal Grover Middle School. Yes, the work we've been looking at is providing a more structured approach from distance learning 1.0, that would be more synchronous with a blend of asynchronous along the way. That would be set up for students and teachers along the way, so it'd be coordinated times and events where they'd be working together, particularly, or times it could be checking in, so, but that'd be the, the plan to do that, where kids would not be allowed to kind of work at any time, teachers be available at set times, and expectation they have students engage in learning. It could be checking in for five, 10 minutes, or it could be there for the, maybe the full period to get instruction along the way, but that'd be the benefit of the, the synchronous-asynchronous piece that we've been working through in the various committees this summer that's involved, teachers and principals throughout this process. Mr. Anderson?
Yep, Jason Anderson, Principal Jefferson High School, very similar to the other three levels. Feedback we received from families was a hope and desire for more synchronous learning opportunities, and so as we've been building schedules and mod, for, and schedules and plans for multiple models, as we hope to narrow it down, you know, we have began some drafts, and we will continue to find to address, but knowing that we will have opportunities for, for both synchronous and asynchronous opportunities for a variety of teacher and student, and student-to-student interactions scheduled through the week and the, and the year, so we will, we will provide that structure to make sure that there is consistency and synchronicity spread throughout the weeks, and the days, and the months.
I would also add, just to, to close out the, the question, that what we endeavored to do with all the four levels, if you include flex, was to have similar schedules and similar philosophies, instructional strategies, and, and PD that follows up, so that when students, families, and teachers, in no particular order, have to pivot or from one model to another, they're not relearning a brand-new system, or relearning a brand-new schedule and the lead time that takes there, so that's the work that's been done over the last two and a half weeks. It's just how do we make this, so that the pivot doesn't have to be 45 degrees, it can be four degrees or five degrees to get in tune. So that was a lot of the work that was being done to simplify the schedules.
And when would you be expecting to have those schedules ready for teachers to start planning?
I would say, again, Jason Anderson, Jefferson High School, if we have some clarity tonight, we can really begin cementing those plans, and we would hope with the next, you know, I don't want to commit ourselves right now to, to something, but we would begin, we would really turn our attention to those really key features with our students and our, our staff, knowing that a schedule is a key part of that, so I, so soon.
And I would echo that. Brian Ingham, Principal Grover Middle School, many teachers have been involved, have been involved in this planning process, and teachers are great collaborator, collaborators, so I know they've been sharing and discussing with their colleagues along the way. So if we'd have direction tonight, we'd be moving forward to, we need to launch workshop weekend Monday, so before that, we'd be rolling things out to staff to make sure we have hit the ground running, prepared to have these plans in place to make for high-quality experience for our students and staff.
Thank you. Director Bibi?
My question is around our media centers and the fact that for some projects, students will need resources available to them. Will our tech tosses who are going to be part of that media be doing any help in, in directing some of our high school students into resources? And then how about our elementary students, where we want to reinforce their reading skills? And I've seen CSUN, I know there's reading on there, but there's nothing like a book in a child's hands. And will there be something whereby either families can check out books for their child through our, our school libraries, and then they can pick them up? I know they've just started doing some of those types of things in pen library. So, I, I just am concerned that our reading program will be hindered by the lack of abundance of reading materials for our students.
I can take that question, Director Bibi. This is John Weiser, Executive Director of Technology. The short answer to your question is yes, reading materials will be available. All the resources of the media center will support any of the models that the district pivots to. We have a little bit of synergy here in that Director Beth Flotmeyer was one of our elementary media specialists until curriculum instruction stole her from us. And so we have media directors at every level focused on the appropriate materials for supporting instruction. We, our tech integration program is a primary support for teachers, and if ever there was a time that teachers needed the support of how to integrate technology tools to improve learning, I think now is a time to lean on their services. And so I think, again, as you heard me speak throughout the last school year and into the spring, I think the collection of a tech integration media program is a, is a great toolset for our, for our schools.
Director Bibi, I'm just going to add on to what Executive Director Weiser said. This is Beth Flotmeyer again, Director of Curriculum Instruction, and throughout the summer, the media directors really worked on a plan of how students will have access to books, so know that students will be able to either re-reply or reserve books in different formats at the different levels, so that they will have access and, and books will be in kids' hands. That was very important to all of us. Thank you, because that's very important to me. I collected a library of books for the kids in my neighborhood this summer, since the libraries were closed, so, thank you.
Thank you. Director Olson?
I just wanted to say that, you know, one of the common, probably sort of traits that a teacher has is to be very flexible, but we have really tested them, and as we discuss, you know, changing models and possibly even changing models again, I just want to give a shout out, make sure and recognize that we appreciate all of the teachers and being incredibly flexible during this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other question or conversation? Question? Director Starks?
I warned you ahead of time, I had a lot of questions. In a distance learning model, will teachers be required to teach from their classroom, required to teach from home? Will they be able to choose? Has that decision been made? I don't know who to direct that question to.
I, I can, just to keep it, Jason Anderson, Jefferson High School, that is a topic we talked about with our, our colleagues. So our plan would be to not require teachers to come into the building. If they so choose, I think we would, because for a variety of reasons, if they want to work from the school site, I think we would work on a lot, allowing that to happen in a, in a safe and secure manner, but we would not be at this time requiring teachers to, to come into the building, so they'd be working from home.
Director Starks?
This is a follow-up similar, in, in the slides that were presented by the, the secondary principals, it mentioned something about the distance learning with support. It said, all courses registered will be honored and provided. So one of my questions is like, if there's a course of ceramics or something that's really challenging to replicate at home, are those courses going to be dropped? Are they going to be offered, but students can come in for certain components? I think like chemistry labs, another one, I kind of had that question. Have those conversations happened?
I hate to keep jumping in, but I will to, to, to help answer questions. That, that came up, and it, the same issues we dealt, we, again, Jason Anderson, Principal Jefferson, the same topics we discussed last spring. That is one of the things I think we would help facilitate as far as materials goes, our art teachers, our music teachers, they've been in their own PD cohorts, working extremely hard amongst their fellow colleagues of their particular activities, how to deliver tremendous distance learning in music, in choir, in arts, and things of that nature. So they are working very, very hard on that. That first week, as, as Principal Osmond discussed, as far as being a unique week, we would, we would really work on getting kids materials that they need to be successful. And then as far as labs goes, I do think that's something that we would, we would try to work towards. We, we want to not guarantee that we could pull that off right now, but that is, that, that's a good example of something that we would like to work towards. We want to ask ourselves questions around equity, you know, when it comes to, to like lab, and is, is, you know, for students that can come in versus students that can't come in. Are we providing an equitable experience? But those are, those are some things that we definitely want to be able to provide to students.
If I may add to that, this is Principal Osmond at Kennedy High School. As I spoke earlier, there's also going to be a process and guiding questions that are each of our staff members within their PLCs, within their departments, they will be asking themselves questions as far as their, you know, their classes, their unit design. What would, what would their course look like in a distance learning environment? And also consider what they've learned in the spring, but at the same time, really have those opportunities to plan as we approach next week. And I truly believe, and I spent some time this morning with some teachers, truly believe our, like some of my colleagues have said, our teaching staff are highly skilled and highly talented, and also our teaching staff are highly skilled and highly talented and also highly collaborative. It took us about forty minutes to get to, to just live with it, with the struggle this morning. But then at, at the end of it, and I, I like minute forty-two, I was looking at the clock, I was like, wow, now we got to a spot now, we're really challenging. I think, and it's just so amazing to see a group of teachers just really think through some guiding questions and really think about their courses and how might it look like? So I'm just, I was just inspired.
If you don't mind too, so Jenna Mitchler, Assistant Superintendent, I'd like to jump in and just notice that Principal Anderson used the word equity there and to talk about how we know not all students perhaps need the same thing. Students need their own unique things, right? And so using that as a lens, as we continue to build out what we provide to students as we move into the start of the year and into these first couple of weeks of the year. And, you know, as I hear Akram talking about bringing a lens and a set of questions to his staff to think through as they're considering their classes that they're going to be offering and how they'll be offering them. It reminds me of the work that we just started last week where we started to talk through equity and the use of a, a lens of equity when we're doing our work, especially around instructional programming. And so we have many site leaders and building teams who had two days, half days, but two days of work around building that equity lens that they can, they can apply as they're thinking through what, what this will look like as we move into the start of the year for us. So I just wanted to point out the word equity there, Jason, your use of it. And then Akram mentioning how you're, you're working with your staff around that. I think we have commitment from all of our leaders to be doing that work.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Superintendent Pujitaki.
Would you be interested in hearing what a typical school day might look like on distance learning?
Well, we would love to, I think.
Dr. Mitchler, could you please help?
Yeah. And so, you know, what I might do is just go back to some of the, some of what Director Flotmeyer had shared before about at the elementary level and the mix of the synchronous and asynchronous learning. Of course, a little bit different at each level. And so, you know, Principal Ingham has talked a little bit about at the middle school level and, and then Principal Anderson at the high school level, but definitely touch bases, opportunities for our staff to be collaborating with one another and then ensuring that our students have, have some of that whole group time that Director Flotmeyer mentioned, and then also some of the small group time as well that could be done, done synchronously. So, you know, I think Superintendent, you called on me to share a little bit more about this and I might guess that it's because with our summer school programming, we had a lot of success thinking through the use of synchronous and asynchronous learning to support some of our students who really did need some of that synchronous learning time. We know there's some students who don't need that, they're just fine on their own, working asynchronously. And perhaps that's better for them and that's great too. But we do know there are some students who need some of that synchronous learning time. And so we're very purposeful about building that in for the students who, who need it and really thrive with that.
Thank you. And Director Olson, I think I saw your hand and then Director starts.
Okay, I'm sorry, this wasn't really a question, but following Principal Osman, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that when Superintendent Pujitaki introduced him at our last meeting, I was doing a sign language clap, clap for him and my camera, I didn't know my camera was off. So I wanted to just say once again, I welcome you and I'm very happy that you are part of our district. And so here's a real clap.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Starks.
So I want to follow up on that conversation that's been talked about, about a typical day. Director Bennett joked last week at our board meeting that for fun, us school board members watch other school board meetings and that's true. So I've watched several other school board meetings in the last couple of weeks. And I think one of the things that I'm really struggling with right now is for several of those meetings, they are given a slide that really spells out, this is what an elementary school student will be doing. At this time, they're doing this, at this time, they're doing this. Middle school, high school, and like for one of the models I saw that students are going to be checking in with every other class throughout the day. So like their first hour, their third hour, their fifth hour and their seventh hour. So yes, even though the students aren't on the screen for six hours, they get those forty-five minute breaks in between, they're still stuck at their dining room table from seven forty-five until two fifteen. So I think that's why I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with, you're giving great high level answers, but in order to approve a distance learning model, I'm, I'm really struggling with the lack of clarity as to what exactly is my students and other kids in our district going to be experiencing on a day-to-day basis in distance learning? I don't know if anybody else can address that, but I just wanted to share that that's my concern. I feel like I've heard a lot about why hybrid won't work and I'm still struggling to hear why distance learning will. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Director Starks. Okay, anyone else from the board? Director Bebe.
I had the same question and that's why I was also wondering if there's some type of a parent orientation that spells that out for parents, so they know what's going to happen. So I've kind of been trying to put myself in the position of a parent and that's why I'm really thankful that Director Starks is asking these questions because she is a parent with children in the district. But I thought, you know, what would I say to my neighbors, you know, what to expect? One family has six children, you know, and, and various, various situations. So I, I guess I'd like to be able to speak to the public with more definement as well. And maybe that could be worked on to give to us. And another question I have is, when I was a teacher, we used to call it guided instruction. And maybe that's what you now call synchronous learning. Sometimes we use terms that parents don't really fully understand. And it sounds and makes sense to us, but maybe we need to make sure that we put things in a way that is not just among our professional colleagues, but is within a vernacular that they can understand.
Director Starks and Director Bebe, I might be able to give you a little, this is Director of Curriculum Instruction Flotmeyer. And I might be able to give you a little overview of elementary from what it might look like from a student perspective. One of the things that we've done right now is every student will probably most likely have a little bit different of a schedule. So in the morning, they would come, all students for a morning meeting. So each class would get together, they would have some social emotional learning time and some just gathering, getting to know you, those kinds of things right away in the morning. Then we would probably have synchronous timed small group for, for students. So Group A would probably meet for a half an hour every single day. And then there's small group time built in for either reading and math, small group instruction. Because we know that synchronous learning for small groups is the best way to have teachers and students together so that they're, they're able to respond to students and prompt them. And, and then our asynchronous time would be that whole group instruction. And that students would be able to, on an equitable basis, do that when they are able. So they wouldn't have to be sitting at their table from seven to three or whatever. So if they're not able to complete their work, work at one fifteen, when it's in the teacher's schedule, they can log on and do that, watch the recording of their teacher teaching and complete the activity that goes with it on their timeline. Does that help clarify for the elementary buildings?
Director Starks.
It does, because I think when we heard the, the hybrid presentation two weeks ago, you know, it, and, and I'm going to leave flex off the table right now, because I know that was still being the, the, how that was going to work was being worked out, but in the hybrid model, it was a student was going to be at school on their in-person days, doing work with their teacher, at home days was all asynchronous. So my concern is when we have all distance learning days and there's synchronous pieces to it, how does a family with two working parents working from home? Or, you know, there's a lot more issues that surround that, that aren't, that are only present in full distance learning that were not present in hybrid. So, and I don't want to take the whole meeting talking about all those different interests, intricacies, you know what I'm trying to say? You know, because I don't think it's valuable of our time right now, but those are the kinds of questions that I've had going through my head of, okay, well, these were answered in hybrid, but they're not answered in distance learning. And so I know that you're, you're still working on making these decisions. I know someone asked Principal Anderson what the timeline was. I think if we can nail down for parents and for students more like, here's when you are going to know these answers, that parents and their, and families can start really planning robustly for the beginning of this year. And I realize that our runway is short and things are coming very quickly, but that would be very helpful.
I'd like to add in here, Brian Ingham, the Principal of Grover North School. So operationally, we are in the mindset of pulling off the hybrid model. We're at this meeting tonight to talk about a potential pivot. We're almost in a very fluid situation. So if we make this pivot and go to the distance learning model, we're prepared to finalize plans and get those communications out to parents and students over the next couple of weeks. What we're doing is, is finalizing the work that's been done in all these committees around a synchronous asynchronous model. And as a summer school principal this year, for the elementary students, we ran a synchronous model. Director Coyne and I kind of led the program where teachers taught synchronously nine, ten, eleven and twelve. It was amazing, the feedback we received from students and, and parents or students and, or parents and staff members about the success with us. And that did not mean that students were on from nine to ten, from ten to eleven, eleven to twelve. They were on for maybe five minutes, ten minutes. We run a similar model with this and we did a parent survey with a computer. We called parents and the feedback was all positive. So our model will be very similar, synchronous and asynchronous, where students would have a schedule. And they might, there might be a day where a student might need to be at their desk and checking in every class period. And they may need to be on there for twenty minutes or they may need to be on there for five minutes. We build in some time where students have a lunch period, office hours to check in. We're building in kind of a collaboration time as well for students. So it's not as straight, they're going to run their exact same schedule. We, we'd modify and shorten the courses a little bit, so therefore it gives teachers the flexibility that they need to take and divide their class and say, class, I need to see, you know, I'm dividing the three groups in a class. I need to see the A group first, the B group and the C group, they come at different times. It gives them some flexibility, but this is the, really the good work our teacher leaders have been doing to think outside the box. Because we all heard and felt the pressure last spring during distance learning one point O that we need more structure, they're not sure what to do and some students are overwhelmed in their social emotional well-being. So what we're looking, prepared to roll out is a schedule that's more detailed and provides that flexibility to allow us teachers to work with students in a direct manner consistently. Or those that are on it and then go on their own, are going to go on their own, come back, check in and give teachers a chance of that, again, that synchronous asynchronous kind of go back and forth. But there being overarching, more clear schedule, we're supposed to expect it to check in. So if we did, you know, make a pivot, come back into hybrid or eventually ideally everyone's perfect world we come into face to face, we, we're running a similar schedule that they would drop back into. Principal Anderson, you want to add in as well to that? Because we're, we're all kind of talking the same thing and we're not, again, because we've been such in a mindset of trying to roll out the hybrid program that we'll work on this right now. Today, they're working on it again, but now we're trying to decide, you know, what direction we're going to go to finalize these plans.
Agreed. Yeah. So Jason Anderson, Principal Jefferson High School. You know, I think Director Flotmeyer said it a few minutes ago about they, they can look different at different levels. We know at high school, it's different, a different experience, the middle and elementary. We know many of our high school students are going to be called upon in the distance learning world to, to work, to help support the family. We know that many of our high school students will be providing childcare for, to younger siblings to support the household. But we need to be respectful of all of those other obligations that our older students may have upon them. So we can, we will and we can provide a very systemized, structured schedule that, that has opportunities for synchronous and asynchronous meetings on a daily basis so that parents and students and teachers will know what to expect from us on a daily basis. But we are also committed to providing alternate methods for our students who maybe that synchronous requirements are a particular struggle for, for them. So we are committed to making sure that students are not penalized for not being able to make synchronous opportunities. We want to be able to provide them because we know that there are students who want to be able to connect with teachers, who need to be able to connect with teachers and other students to work through curriculum and problem solving, all those things. But we're also not in the business of penalizing kids for, for not being able to make them due to life circumstances. So we, we, I, I know there's, there's timeline expectations. We want to be able to provide our families and our staff and students with detailed plans and everything. This group has been working diligently to provide multiple options for the board to present. And once I think we're able to, to go in one direction, some, some, some info in some direction will come real quick, real clear from the schools.
Thanks. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. So I just wanted to jump in. I know we've been a long time on this question, but to kind of tie a bow on this a little bit to say, I, I really want folks in the community and for all of us here tonight, tonight to hear loud and clear that we have done a lot of planning this summer. And so even as recently as today, I've seen sample schedules of what distance learning, for example, could look like in our schools at each level. We've done a lot of thoughtful work around this. Our teams have been working hard. And so, you know, it's not that we need more time necessarily to flesh that out with more detail. I think we have it and we're ready for, if there is a pivot, we can, we can really move and put things into place. And so I'm just wanted to echo what Brian Ingham has said before is that, you know, we've been focusing, especially the principals who are here tonight, a lot of their time and energy on what a flex and a hybrid model would look like. But we've also all summer long been preparing for a distance learning model. And I'm, I'm confident that we have a lot of really great pieces that are, we'd be ready to put in place if we needed to do that.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying and I know that schedules will be coming and more information will be coming out soon for staff members if this is the model that, that we adopt, if we change it from what we previously had. And I, I have plain confidence that, you know, you will be sharing this with us. If you could share with the board, that would be great so that we can have that information as well as it starts coming. And, you know, just like you said, Dr. Mitchler, everybody has been getting ready for, for the school year. You know, whether it was in a distance learning type of model or the hybrid model, we know how to teach in a face-to-face model. But I know that teachers have been using this time, the summer to really prepare for what, what is the beginning of the year. I know that teachers are not just sitting waiting for administration to kind of give them a better idea what they're going to teach and how they're going to teach it. I'm sure that, you know, most of us already have plans already in place and in preparation for what we know that it's, that is coming. So I have confidence that our teachers have been working really hard on that too. So I am going back, I think we're coming here to, to a moment of, of a decision. It's longer. I know that the public have been watching and you have been working hard. We have been asking questions during the whole week. And yeah, the, the, the hybrid instruction model was approved on August third. We were following, or we were basing that decision and as we were following the guidelines of Minnesota Department of Education and Minnesota Department of Health, we were falling within the hybrid model as we were looking into the COVID numbers and we made a decision to allow the administration to take a deeper look into the hybrid model and see if it was going to be viable or not. As, as you have seen today in the presentation, there's different elements that have made the administration conclude that this is not going to be the hybrid model at this time during this, this moment. It's not going to be the best option for our students as we talk about education. Quality of education is what I want to say, right? Because of the different challenges that this is presenting. So I, I am deeply concerned still about, I know there's a lot of families that really need their kids to go back to school, even if it was only two days a week, you know, because of childcare issues. I know that there were different family situations too, where students need to be at school because of many different reasons. But I'm also, I also feel reassured. But I'm also, I also feel very sure, you know, as we talk about support systems within the, the distance learning model. So I think that I'm, I'm ready to, to vote. And my question for my colleagues, are you ready to vote? Okay. I think so. We've been ready for a while. So thank you all for being patient. I think it's, it's always, it's always very important to, to give room for those board members and members of the community that have questions. So, okay, so let's vote. So voting on that motion that was presented or moved by Director Starks. And do we want to say that again, what Director Starks, what your motion was, really quick?
If I can remember it. The motion is to amend the resolution passed on August 3rd to state the distance learning with supports model in place of the hybrid model.
My second that motion, Olson.
Very good. Okay, all those in favor of this?
Yeah, it had already been a seconded earlier. She was just repeating it, so thank.
Yeah, it was seconded before by Director Olson, correct? Yeah, it was not.
No, Steiga.
Oh, it was you. Okay, I'm sorry. So the motion, once again, Director Starks, it was seconded by Director Steiga. All those in favor, please say aye. Director Bebe?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steiga?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. So we have seven votes in favor and this motion has passed. Very good. And we don't have any other items in the agenda tonight. So thank you very much for everyone who has worked very, very hard on looking into the different models and bringing those recommendations. Thank you to the teachers and members of the community, our parents and our students. So is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Steiga.
Thank you. All those in favor are adjourning the meeting, please say aye. Director Bebe?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steiga?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Sorry about.